Without Mayor Dunn this evening. And without Mayor Pro Ten who was traveling, so I'll be presiding over the meeting. Let's get started. We'll start as we always do with an indication. I'll give a pledge of allegiance. God, we're thankful to be living where we live. Yeah, man? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under our nation, under God, in this world with everything just as well. September 11th will be later this week, and it's called Patriot Day, 23 years ago. The events of 9/11 happened. Really, it's several things that cost a lot of lives for people. War on terror around the world and other in our community and our town or our country. So why don't we do this tonight? We're not meeting on September 11th, but we'd like to take just a moment of silence to remember those who lost their lives and the families that were impacted on September 11th, almost 23 years ago today. So pause for just a minute, please. Thank you. This is September 9th, 2024. This is a Stallings Town Council meeting. We'll open with any public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? We'll go through the agenda tonight. First up is consent agenda. There are four items on it. I'd like to pull one if you don't mind, and I'll tell you in just a second. So the item A are minutes. Item B is supplement of our code book, and item D is a budget ordinance four for Twin Pines. With your permission, I'll pull CRTPO MOU. We had a citizen with a question about it last time I was absent. So I'll recommend we move that to another item. So let's take a motion, if you're well, if you're willing and able, for A, B, and D of the consent agenda. Any questions? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda for A, B, D, and with the removal of C to, for discussion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. The mayor's not here. Any council members have a report? Mr. Hall?
No, sir.
Wadowitz? Shairs?
Hey, just congratulations on the pickleball opening, and there was no Wuma meeting last month, so no report from there.
I think I have no reports. So town manager, do you have a report?
Just two brief items from staff. The first is per our routine approach. You'll find the budget line transfer list. Just want to submit that to the board. No action there. It's again part of our efforts for greater transparency. And secondly, we've got our big exciting event Stallings Fest on Saturday. So Donnelly, do you mind giving a brief update to the board?
Yeah, of course. So this Saturday, September 14th, from 11 to 4, we'll have our annual Stallings Fest right here at Stallings Municipal Park. We'll have a booth set up for you guys. You just gotta come in, sit there, enjoy, meet the public. Should be a lot of fun. This year, probably the coolest thing we're adding. And we have 45 children vendors that are out there doing like handmade goods that they've sold all the way from food and candy. Out there taking over the whole front building. That's gonna be a really cool add-on. Come and stop by. You guys all have P1 parking passes in front of you. Those need to be on your dash of your vehicle to come in to get into this lot. They'll be parking in this that'll let you right in if you forget that. I emailed you guys. Also the pass, you just show them on their phone. They also, last resort, they all have your names. So just make sure they're not staff members, so you will probably get asked, but all you need to do is say your name.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, Alex?
No, sir.
All right, let's move to the agenda approval. I mentioned moving consent item C, so I'd like to make that item 7A this evening. Anything else to be added?
Mr. Richardson, staff would ask we add a discussion for vendor slash sponsors at Stallings Fest as well.
Recommend we add that as item 7B. So anything else to add to the agenda tonight? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with item 7A and 7B added?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Item number four is interesting. It's parking regulations. Text amendment staff has asked us to withdraw this item for further discussion at a later time. So any objection to that, council?
Yes, sir.
Item number five, resurfacing contract. Town engineer Kevin Parker, please.
Here tonight to request your approval for our FY 2025 resurfacing contract. Staff solicited for bids going through the formal advertising process. We did, we did that process throughout August pretty much, and we received seven bids. Lowest bidder was Blithe Construction at $887,000, just over. Officially advertised informally for construction engineering inspection services. We only received one bid in that regard, and that was from UES Professional Solutions for just under $35,000. Coming back to the resurfacing contract, we, so this piece will focus on your standard milling and overlay. Take the existing asphalt and replacing it with, with a new surface layer. Briefly describe the scope of work with this, with this contract. Coming back in the spring with a preventative maintenance resurfacing contract. So this lowest bidder is exactly where we expected the budget to be. So again, we still have the budget to approach our resurfacing program. I can take any questions, but ultimately, staff is requesting authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Blithe Construction.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
Just one comment. I did ask, every year it seems like I get questions on which roads are being surfaced and et cetera, et cetera. So I did ask Alex if we could get kind of just, just the name of the roads and kind of the maps in a document, put somewhere on the share, on a website, so we can point people there when they ask questions.
Other questions?
Yes, so you said the contract's slightly over what we budgeted, or?
It's, it's pretty much right on par with what we budgeted. We had a little carryover funds from last year, so our total resurfacing budget is a little over 1.3 million. We'd like to split that about 25, 75. 75 being this reconstructed piece and 25 being that preventative maintenance. We're, we're right there.
Okay. And have we used Blithe before, or do we know?
I, I'm not sure if we've used them in recent years. I know the past three years we have not used them. But they, they do good work. They're doing P3, they're doing 485, so they do, they're doing a lot of work in, in the area.
I guess. So that's, they're doing work for the DOT? Okay, cool.
Any more questions? I have a motion to approve this 2024 resurfacing contract.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the resurfacing contract with Blithe Construction and also execute the CEI Services contract with UES.
Thank you. Can you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to confirm the amounts for the record, the Blithe Construction contract is $887,640. And the CEI Services contract with UES is $34,860.
Sorry about that. You're good?
No, you did a good job actually reading the motion. I just told you to approve the contract, and you read it the whole thing. All right, next up, item number six, parking wreck arbor replacement surplus funds, disc golf course enhancement proposal. Ms. Donnelly?
All right, good afternoon, council. Thank you, guys, all for coming up to the River Cudding this evening. I'll just jump right into it. So the arbor replacements surplus funds. I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of background about why I'm here today. So back in 23, 24, council approved a phase project for our arbors to get replaced, if you recall. What was happening is we just had these wooden arbors all around the park that's been there since 2012. You know, tried to withstand the test of time, weather, and they just started to deteriorate. The Parks Department thought we were gonna have to completely remove all these out, replace them. However, we worked with a contractor, and he was able to salvage a lot of the wood and just take the pieces off that needed to be replaced. All sanding down what was currently there, restaining them, and also setting up the maintenance department with a plan on how to better care of them in the future. What happened, part of this phase project, we put $50,000 in the budget over the span of a few years. However, the first year that we put the money in there, we were able to carry it over to this year's budget and finish out the project. So this year, we have that $50,000 of surplus funds because this project is completed, which is really exciting. But what we wanted to do was take it as an opportunity, since this project is finished, as you can see, I don't know if you noticed, but they've all been completely replaced, restained, even the pillars have been painted. And that's, you know, where we are today with the leftover $50,000. So the Parks Department thought this was a great time to kind of grab you guys while we could with this money that is in the budget this year to start working on some other park enhancements that really need to happen. And that's how it brings us to the Blair Mill Disc Golf Course. It was in the budget. If we go back, we applied for a $50,000 grant to redo the Disc Golf Course. We knew that that was a need that needed to be taken care of. However, we did not receive the grant. So to do all the renovations for the Disc Golf Course, we're looking at about a total cost of $35,000. I'll go into what this would cover for the course, where the course stands today, and a little bit of background about it at Blair Mill. So 2009, council adopted Fairhaven Park. 2011, it officially opened to the public. In 2012 is when it was officially given the name Blair Mill Park, as well as the 18-hole Disc Golf Course was officially opened. This course as it stands, like I said, 18-hole Disc Golf Course, I'll kind of orientate you guys. This is Students Mill Road, and this is where we just opened the greenway at. So it's directly across the street. We have a few issues with this course. This has probably been the biggest thorn in my foot since I've started here for the department. We get a lot of complaints about the course. People love it. It's super beginner friendly. But if you can see up here, and if, as y'all are aware, this is the flood plain that kind of goes in the middle, and a lot of these holes are implorable weeks after a big rain. So what's happening is these tee pads, they've been underwater, the baskets are underwater. It's really hard to cross right here. So it's just led to this course being a little bit of a challenge for the community to play. I'm not saying people don't play it. You'll still drive by there every day in their sports park and enjoy the course. However, we definitely need to make some upgrades to how it stands today. So this is some feedback. It's not all of them. I wish I could pull all the data for you guys. Overall, our course is rated about a 3.2, opposed to our park, Stallings Park, which is about a 4.7 on Google reviews. And I just kind of grabbed the ones that really stand out to me. And these are reviews from the day I started here to currently, all the way from, I'd say this is one of the worst courses in Charlotte area, to all the way from even during the drought in Manchester to stay flooded. So we just have a lot of people that kind of voice these opinions. We've listened in-house. We've done everything we possibly can from getting some beavers taken out of that area and clearing some of the floodwaters to just help it flow better. But we've just reached a point where there's nothing that staff can do with the current course to make it any better than it is today. To go with the feedback, I'm a visual person. I thought it would be just super important for you guys to see some pictures of the course if you've never been back there. So as you can see, this was a few weeks after it rained, one of the holes. See, it's flooded. I'm not a Disc Golf pro, so I've been promising you my disc is gonna land right there in that puddle, and I'm probably not gonna go in and retrieve it. This is what the signage looks like. It's back from 2012. Again, the department didn't really want to put some money into it if we knew this was a course that we wanted to redesign later. So it's kind of just stayed as it is. You can see over here, a tree actually fell with the sound of it. The new community member who came out and put the tree back up, and it's just leaning there on the bottom, sun fell out. Someone used their artistic abilities to draw what that hole looks like, as well as these are the concrete pads that were underwater. You can just see they just don't look the best. Definitely need some love. And this was an old Eagle Scout project that was done in years past to just try to help people make that connection from one side of the park to the other. And these have been moved, replaced, they're not, you know, anchored into the ground by any means. The Disc Golf Course, it is awesome, and definitely it's kind of been a labor of love from different parties over the years. And we're just trying to give it that nice cohesive feeling over there at Blair Mill Park. So $35,000, I meant for me, that would be a tough, tough price to spend, so I really wanted to kind of show you guys what that would cover. So this would cover us transitioning from an 18-hole Disc Golf Course to 11. So when I say 11 holes, people might be like, oh, my gosh, they're shorting it. But what we're actually gonna do, which other people in the county have done, is go to a dual tee course. So what that means is there'll be actually 22 baskets with 11 tee pads. So you can play each tee pad essentially two different ways. So the course, while it might look like on paper that it's shrinking, it's actually expanding. So we're giving the community more ways to play. We'll also create new fairways, very similar to golf. We're gonna have to go out there, clear some trees, do some brushwork. We'll install 11 new baskets, purchase those baskets with locks. We're gonna have to pour concrete, put down new tee pads. We're gonna try to salvage some of the tee pads that we do currently have that we think we can move, but some of them that's been under water for years, we're just gonna have to let go as long, also the updated signage. So that's a big one. That can get kind of pricey, but as we have now, our signage is just very confusing. A lot of people complain about it, and we just want to get that up to date. Benefit to the project, what we really wanted to focus on was something that wasn't gonna be very heavy maintenance cost-wise. So the new course is actually gonna push these holes outside of that flood plain and get the holes off of the land, so we can use more of the woods and be able to develop that when council seems fit. It'll be a course that we're kind of married to for many, many years to come, so yeah, it's a great time to do it. The new course will support group, solo play, community engagement out there. It's also gonna be way more accessible for people that want to play. We're gonna really clean up those Eagle Scout projects. Great in the past, however, probably not really great for our Parks Department currently. Beginner-friendly design, it's, it's not gonna be an expert course by any means. We really just want people to come out, recreate passively, just be open to everyone, experience the play. And then, like I said, it's gonna preserve that open space we have at Blair Mill Park for one day if we want to build. We don't want to do this course, and then five years later, if you guys are like, hey, we really want to start putting some on Blair Mill Park, you have these baskets now that we're throwing across the property, and we have to redo it all over again. Really try to be mindful. And what we did to ensure that, I didn't want to fill this course and be like, okay, you guys designed this, we're in trouble. We reached out to some local clubs that have a really big hand in our Disc Golf Course currently. So one of those is the Charlotte Disc Golf Club, Mark Huthar. He actually helped design the course as it is now, and he's open to changing it. He does a lot of things in Charlotte for the Disc Golf community, and he is open to helping us on this adventure, as well as Porter Ridge, their Disc Golf Club for high school. That's their home course. And they've actually asked us to help preserve it, make it a little bit nicer, and this is just a great opportunity to do that as well. And I've put their letters of support in the demo for you guys. So the requested action tonight, ooh, that was a lot, is to reallocate $35,000 of the $50,000 surplus funds for the arbor replacement towards the Blair Mill Disc Golf Course renovation. I'm gonna answer any questions. I know that was a lot.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Ms. Donnelly. How many questions do we have? Who's got questions?
I, I just want to know about that Boy Scout project. Did you say you're gonna keep that?
No, we will redo that.
Are you gonna tell that Boy Scout?
So as of right, I've just been told it was an Eagle Scout project usually. What we do now is we have documentation. They have a name placard out there. So I don't know. I can definitely ask Erin or someone to start looking at their documentation of that. That's just what I've been told. We definitely repurpose those if that is something that council would like to do. However, they're probably not in the best of areas. So we could definitely hold on to those and maybe move them somewhere that makes a little more sense. That's definitely something that the department.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I know a couple months back, I believe, you'd come to us about, and one item you had mentioned was doing a study that, for Blair Mill Park that would then open us up to possibility of having grants. I think that that study, if we was, were done, and then we got those grants, that would also potentially cover, could be enough money to cover maybe some renovation of the Disc Golf Course. So my question then is, why, I, yeah, I guess, why are we investing in the Disc Golf Course rather than doing the study, which could then lead to, you know, I don't know, a few hundred thousand, hundred thousand to do the whole park?
Yeah, of course. If the council is open to investing these surplus funds into a master plan amendment, what was proposed a few months back, that is definitely something that I could put together and come back at the next council meeting instead of using the $4,000 to do the course. I could look into. I think I was under the impression of trying to do as much stuff in-house without having to have a plan. However, I, I would love to get that master plan done. Alex, if you have any input on that?
No, no. I, I think you put that perfect, Ms. Donnelly. Council member Hall, I, I think, you know, I would definitely be an advocate to the board and recommend the board to consider the long-range plans for that very reason. I think a lot of times when you look at, you can tell a park that's been kind of master planned right versus one that's been piecemealed together. I think the Stallings Municipal Park is a great example of a park that was kind of master planned. So I do think there is an advantage of doing this now and that the money is available. And, you know, we've had the design done. We did try to get a grant, right, and that kind of fell through. And thanks to Ms. Donnelly and her team's fiscal stewardship, we've got the money available. So I, I, I think both are important, really. So it's, I guess, the pros and cons. Do y'all want to weigh it and do it? Do you want to knock something out that the community can enjoy, or do you value more going and you kind of doing that master plan and trying to kind of package everything together so that you can get a, you know, I think a lot of the grants are what, 50% typically? So I, I do think that if we go that route, and it's a good route, something we should do, because I know the master plan for Blair Mill Park, the last one was done. We've heard some comments that, hey, maybe it's not the best fit. You know, it calls, for example, throwing away the Disc Golf Course forever, which is, we've gotten a negative reaction on that. So I guess just pros and cons of, of both approaches.
Ways you could do it. You could take care of the Disc Golf Course now, push it back into the woods, and then when you redo that, you can kind of go both ways. I would say if y'all wanted to kind of pause this and just do the master plan, the Disc Golf Course still definitely needs some renovations done, maybe not to the scale of what I'm proposing today. However, we probably just need to address them.
And, and I do apologize. So I, I, I'm not fully aware of, you know, what the grant is. Is it matching or anything? I think budget-wise, we're probably not in a position to be spending more money on, you know, like, to, to get that matching. But I, I, I didn't know if it was 50%, 75, or just like a blank check for, here's $100,000. Yeah.
In my dreams.
So.
Maybe, maybe that's something we work towards then, is, is kind of doing the grant, considering the slow-hanging fruit. Because the grant, so we go after it's, oh, gosh, forgive me, what, what are they called? You know, it's the big state grants.
So there's part of that.
Part F.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest one you're thinking of.
Those are typically 50%, and it's not like a $50,000 match. Probably be closer to, you know, $500,000, a million-dollar type fund, so for major, major projects. So I know the board is really focused on the long-term stewardship of the town financially. You know, Mayle might be a good time, might not be a good time to do something like that. But it's something we could definitely put on the CIP and try to work towards.
So you're saying that the master plan for the park is order of magnitude?
They're typically larger when it comes to part F grants. The grant we tried to get for this one, and we were unsuccessful, was 100% grant. But the big, a lot of times when you, you read in the papers, you see it in the news, hey, this local government in North Carolina got this big grant to help with this big, new, awesome project. It's typically part F grant funds, and there's, those are typically 50%.
Right, but the cost for our master plan, do we know what that is?
For an amendment of.
Yeah, the amendment, that's what you were talking about.
Yes, sir. You're looking at about $20,000. I would say 20 to 25.
Not far off from the remaining amount.
Yeah, okay. Or, and my last, a question. Does this redesign remove all of the tees and baskets from the flood area? So there's no, no wet on the course after a rain for a couple of days?
What we're trying to do is, because that will be eventually trying to think long-term greenway connection. Get away from that greenway connection. But can guarantee, you know, the water won't stay there longer than a day or two. However, I can say positive, it'll be a better situation from what we're.
Council, what if, what if, you know, if, if, if the board approves the Disc Golf Course renovation, if, at least 50,000, 15,000 over? You know, we just heard Ms. Donnelly say, hey, we're, it's probably 20,000 to 25,000 for that kind of amendment. What if we kind of challenged ourselves as staff to see if we could identify throughout the course of the budget years, in the coming months? See if we could identify another $10,000 in savings, try to match with that additional 15,000, and see if we could come up with that 20,000 to 25,000 by identifying cost savings internally to try to get to that amount? Would the board, not that you would commit to it today, but would you be open to hearing that if we found that in the future?
Posing, pausing this or doing this?
Doing this.
Serving the 15,000?
That's right. That's right. And, and, and y'all will be challenging us to find somewhere else in, in the budget an additional $5,000 to $10,000 to cover that amendment. If we're able to find it, great. We would bring it to y'all, for y'all to consider it. If we didn't, then we didn't. We didn't meet the challenge, and we wouldn't do it.
You could put it in the next year's budget, 25, 26, it might work better.
Yeah, I, one last one. So how long, we're doing a lot of work. How long is this projected to last? And, and not like putting it in, but these new, I, I don't know any of the terms.
Is that what you're saying? Like, what's the longevity of?
Yeah, is, is this like, we're gonna have to replace these tee boxes in a year or two? Or is this, we think, 10, 20 years?
Yeah, so what's out there right now and stuff in touch to be asked, man, as well? I would say with very low maintenance priority in the past, that they held up relatively okay, not in the best shape. So with our staff that we have now and the connections that we've made with the Charlotte Disc Golf Club and getting everyone together, I think the longevity of it, I could see you getting 20 years. Everyone taking care of it, doing their part, and having the staff that. Everyone taking care of it, doing their part, and having the staff that we have internally objects in-house.
Yeah, I mean, this, this board is invested in, in maintenance for our parks where we didn't have it before, right? Bringing in a full-time maintenance, maintenance staff to really focus on maintaining things like the arbor, the disc golf course. I think we're gonna see our assets, now that we have the resources to manage them appropriately, last much longer than they have in the past.
Okay, any more questions? I have a motion.
I actually have a motion to go ahead and approve the, the, using the surplus funds to refurbish the disc golf course at Blair Mill Park.
I'll second that. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Yay, thanks!
Item seven, public safety camera system. Chief, Franks, please.
About what we're calling a crime program, which stands for crime reduction investigation. Talk about a little bit of background, some features and benefits of this system, locations and partnerships, costs and so on. Background, the Stallings Police Department wants to purchase a public safety camera system. Five strategic locations in town. A little bit about the vendor, Verkata. They were founded in 2016. Works 2019. This company has 150 entities within the United States. Berkeley. Back in 2020, when I first got here, we have some HOAs. One of the, the big vendors of the area was running a program at the time. They bought so many cameras, they gave the police department so many cameras, that we started talking to homeowners. Park, um, once all that passed, we, we hit this. Just a few little pointers here. Seven out of 10 crimes that occur use a vehicle. Whether the vehicle is stolen, or whether the bad guy's driving a vehicle, or somehow a vehicle's. Facts here in 2022. Stallings Police have taken 48. Fargo, Bank robbery in Wells Fargo. I don't know how it allowed, and we're on. And they want a police review. Those are just stallings with Indian trail. The 2020 study showed that the average American is caught on camera almost 200. By that number, um, but it's like, well, I guess. There are a lot of cameras out there. This Verkata system, it's got some really great features, high-resolution cameras, those are LPR quality cameras. This is not LPR system license plate. Not what it does, but it is, has LPR license plate cameras. Color vehicle license, not even license, just a color. And every time cars run through a camera location, they would flag it and send it to, um, the criminal. Five, um, white grangos drove through. Last 20 minutes. Cloud storage. Store it on the cloud. We're able to keep it there, and if we need to download it to save it for a case file, advantages of the system, it's got real-time monitoring abilities. Not the same, but I'll use the example, like. Not what this is, but I would say a very, very miniaturized version. We could have somebody, if he knew, we got a tip that something's gonna happen in the corner of the side of the road, we could have somebody watching the camera. Turns, I mean, and having cameras theoretically should deter someone from being in a crime. Trust, we're looking at doing some community partnerships. Currently, we have a community video partner program where if you have a Ring Doorbell camera, you can register that camera, so if you have something happen in the neighborhood. We've got 12 Ring Doorbell cameras. When you go knock on doors, you say, "Hey, do you mind checking your cameras for us?" If you see anything, let us know. Local businesses that are in those strategic locations. I think it was probably two years ago, the General Assembly passed a statute that municipalities would be allowed to put public safety camera systems on the DOD right-of-way. Still not come up with any rules that explain how. That's why we're looking at a kind of public. Locations, um, we've, we've, our detectives went around town and were looking at, what are the strategic locations? We're gonna see a couple that are on here, like Monroe and Stallings Road's not on here. That was our first location, like. On the other day, ready to do that. So, um, four yards, uh, at Lord's Road, Idilewild, at 711 or Exxon. Lockups of where the cameras would be pointing. There, I, I cut and paste that in. That is what, uh, little blurred out on that infrared look, but. Where it's expanded onto this big, big screen. Stallings Road, we, we opted to put, um, a 360-degree camera by the parking lot, so we could see people hitting that house wall, just in case we were to have some sort of mess.
Wh- which one is this?
This is, uh, right across the street at Stallings Park.
Okay.
That is based on using one of the towns.
Backup, orient me on that one.
Uh, so, the building at the bottom. Down past that loose area. The road, 'cause it's focusing on.
What, what drove the selection of locations? Is it like retail uses?
So, because we were, uh, one was, um, retail was there. Put a pole on their property or use one of their light poles, so that was one of the reasons. The other was, we're trying to, because this is the entry of our hole. Was adding cameras at different locations. This was to hit the entry and exit point. Most of the folks that are committing crimes here are not driving back to their neighbor here in town, they're, they're leaving town. Lot of our crime that occurs is past. Try to pick locations that we're gonna get cars coming in. Matthews, uh, the Sheriff's Office, they all have camera systems as well. Partners with them, although it's a different vendor, um, we still have a relationship, we work together on investigations. Matter of fact, on Idilewild Road, pointing into Hendy Bridge, Sheriff's Office has a couple cameras there installing, but pointing into. Yep, initially, we picked locations that, so we could find people.
Clarify, this isn't for tracking speed of cars, writing citations, anything like that?
Capturing images. Like, I don't use, uh, flock cameras, those are the ones everybody uses, or a lot of people around here are using. That is catching license plate data, it's running license plate data and driver data, and it's sending it to the police. If a car, uh, if a car hits through a flock camera in Mint Hill, it's running it through their system, running through the state database, and it's kicking into all the Mint Hill police cars. Car stolen, this person has a warrant, um, quite honestly, our, our geography doesn't really align with that. Time officer was there, they were either over there already in Matthews. Practical wise, that wasn't. So, this pro-, this, this costs, um, a 10-year total, so we are paying for 10 years' worth of licensing. With a four, uh, 5% contingency, it's 85,000. Equipment, just the cameras itself, the sole source, we don't need to bid. Other Jesse, uh, installation, licensing, uh, we broke, broke the threshold for town need on it. First of the camera system.
Questions? I'll lead off with my dumb one from earlier. Uh, why this, I mean, obviously concern of cost, but why this versus like ring?
So, that picture I showed you was. Quality of the camera was just way above any type of home. Did do a, a testing phase of this, we had these set up for about two weeks. And it's sitting right up here outside of our lieutenant's office in investigation. License plates all night long, you could read them. Those cameras that you're referring to.
And then you mentioned Winston Salem, and I think some, another part.
Statesville.
Statesville. Have you talked to them about this company, or how, how they've?
Have not talked to them, um, other than just the research the lieutenant did. Talked to Statesville. Product, um, really depending what you're looking for. Perfect example, the flock cameras, that was the other one we looked at, the 10-year would only give us a two-year contract.
And then, sorry, the last point. So, the, it, it takes quality that it can re-license plates, but it doesn't have that capability, is that additional software that you have to get, or?
They're not, they're not there yet, I believe. I'm sure that is something they. Car, stolen car comes back, um, unless it meets certain parameters, we're not, we don't chase property crimes, so, um, other system, that's what it's doing, it's kicking back stolen cars, stolen license plate. Things, based on our limited pursuit policy, we're not gonna chase that car to begin with. Geography, our town's not really set up. And that would come back to hit on officer's computer, they got to the location and found the car, let's say they found it, they're already leaving the city limits, or they're even leaving.
So, the towns around, I don't know if that, what you were asking, Graham, um, the Mint Hill, we're, we're not gonna connect with them somehow in the clouds?
So, no, these, these are two separate systems, but because we have, uh, great partnerships with the surrounding agencies, they would call us and say, hey, do you have anything? We had such and such happen, do you look at your cameras? Call them and say, hey, can you check your cameras?
So, how do you check your cameras? I mean, you gotta go through.
No, if you put, uh, you have, uh, there's a, like a search engine on there, you put in the parameters, you're looking at date and time, um, you're looking at if you have any descriptors. Black drango with, have only three letters of a license plate, or three. Will run through the, all the cameras and say, 30:00 in the morning, this car, we had eight cars run through this camera here.
So, so every time I go through one of those intersections, you're gonna take, take my picture, or you get my picture from my license?
It's, it's only the vehicle. It is not running, it would know, um, driving his vehicle through, it's capturing a picture of the vehicle on the license plate.
Okay.
Not the driver, and it's not running the plate, it's just storing it in case we need it. Perfect example of the Wells Fargo bank robbery, we had a, um, a very detailed description of the vehicle, it had a, one of the fenders had a different color than the rest of the truck, it had no license plate. Could've put that in the system, and it could've started turning through. Hit the car on the, on the camera. No, it's, it's completely storing it. This is not a license plate reading system. This is license plate reading quality, I mean, it's really high.
So, with privacy concern, you're saying that when I've driven through Matthews and Mint Hill, I've been on camera, and my car and license plate is up in the cloud in the, or in a database, that if they needed to see where I was at a certain time, they could do that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you've gone down Idilewild at the Hendy Bridge, or Monroe Street.
Yep.
Your license.
Right, okay. And then, funding. Asset forfeiture funds are being proposed, they can be used for other things, but do you have any other higher priority than this?
Um, right now, this is our, our, obviously, we don't wanna tap out all of asset. That whole system is a continuous.
Okay, so not property taxes? Okay, so not property taxes, but budgeted out of, uh, expected asset forfeiture revenues, that coming every year. Goal would be to add more cameras over time with future funds?
That would be, I would, I would probably put a request in the budget to add one camera. We're also going to talk into our HOAs again.
Okay, and then last question, these are placed on private property, you said, not in right of way with permission, and it's free? You're looking for places that will let you?
That is what we're looking for, and we have a. Started the conversation with some of our local businesses, but we're not.
Yeah, so I'll beat the, uh. For the, the contract, you said it's eighty-six thousand and change, and it's ten years. The questions I would have are. What does that exactly cover? Is, is that covering repairs, where if, if their, their devices go out year two, they're going to come out and repair it? Basically, how do we know that we're not, we're not going to get to year three, year four of this deal, and we have to now pay a hundred thousand dollars?
So, um. So that's one thing, um, but, uh, it's a ten year warranty, ten year license. Some of my college campus cameras are relatively inexpensive, it's the. Those are where the costs come in.
And then, I know I'm getting into the details of the contract probably, uh, is, are the images being stored on their servers, or is it that? They go to a third party? The reason I ask is concerns, obviously, about privacy, and then, you know, the data that's going out there, especially if we're putting it in a park.
So, um, not a tech guy, but my understanding is this. Alex, the manager and I have talked about this, and normally, you're not going to have somebody come report a crime. At level of investigation, we're looking for vehicles after thirty days. Off in the vehicle, they're going to call. That thirty day one. Their server unless we download it from this.
Same kind of, just kind of follow up question there, was like, so how, how, how does that upload happen? Is that, are we having to install wifi across the whole?
And they use a, on the cradle point, because that's what we use on our squad cars, but it's.
I'm still not following, because the SIM card's not, I mean, it's saying that it uses cell technology? Okay, okay.
Internet over cellular.
Internet over cellular, okay, that's what I was looking for, all right.
Any more questions? Motion on this item from anyone? Two actions, one is.
Can the first motion be?
Item one up there?
Item two first, yes.
So, counsel, do you understand what we're being asked to do here, just waive an informal bidding process? We hit a dollar threshold that requires an informal bidding, we're asking to waive, for what reason, simply?
So. How would you get a camera and install, all done by? Not to.
Can't parcel it out?
Can't parcel it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, get a motion on number two first from someone?
Make a motion to approve the amended budget ordinance.
Two up on the screen.
Number two on the screen, okay, sorry, so. I make a motion for counsel to waive the informal bidding process for service costs for the new public safety camera system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes.
Number one, and then the.
Get a motion to, uh, I'll read the motion, somebody can, so move, request the council to approve the purchase of a camera system using asset forfeiture, forfeiture funds to pay for the system. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget ordinance number five, can you get someone to approve an amended budget ordinance number five?
All right, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, pass or approve the amended budget ordinance number five for police department cameras.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, chief, that's it. All right. Next up, item seven A, we pulled this from consent, I'll be real brief on this, we had a citizen, uh, ask some questions about this one, which, uh, I was out of town on that date, so let me just address the citizen's question, and remind you of what we're asking here. CRTPO stands for Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, it's a federally required organization. Ours is three counties, uh, in, in breadth, with every mu, every municipality, um, every county, uh, the State Board of Transportation participating in monthly meetings to spend federal highway fund dollars. Program fund them in the context of a master transportation plan for the region. It's required, uh, one of the other requirements of the MPO, or the Charlotte Regional Transportation, or, or, of the federal legislation, is a memorandum of understanding. Every ten years, the memorandum of understanding is revisited after the annual census, where population numbers have changed. That's important, because population numbers in the context of MOUs typically drive two things, one is the voting weight. How many votes do Stallings get versus Charlotte, based on percentage of population? And the second thing that drives is the cost of participating in the MPO. I'm, I'm saying that MPO and CRTPO, if I say that, they're, they're synonymous, um, for transportation planning. So this MOU was revisited, uh, over the last year or two, I was on the subcommittee of the group, uh, working through it, so I'm fairly familiar with it. It changed a couple of things, the weighted vote provisions changed, so Charlotte received a little bit less of a weighted vote. They have the largest population, they have an overwhelming majority of the vote, forty-six percent, um, is their vote, it got lower to a little bit less than that, we added some, um, votes to municipalities with over fifty thousand. So those are the really minor changes that affect the voting. Population numbers change in the last ten years, that resulted in a de facto net, uh, change to the funding mechanism, we're providing matching funds, a sort of our dues. CARPO, think of it that way, matching funds for the federal dollars really equate to our dues for participating. Our dues are seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars for twenty twenty-four, seven thousand dollars, and that's based on our population. The MOU was approved by the CRTPO by a vote of fifty-eight to four, now it's been parceled out to all the towns and members for elected body approval. If we don't approve it, we essentially come out of CARPO, meaning we don't participate in the decisions, the discussions, or, uh, not necessarily missing out on federal funding, but, but, uh, we don't participate in discretionary grant opportunities. Such is the one that funded two point two million dollars for, uh, three P a couple of years ago. We pay seven thousand dollars roughly, we've received, uh, three point five million dollars in five years as a result of participating. That's a, so what we want to do tonight is approve it, but the, the citizen asked a, a specific question, I thought, uh, it was a good one, and I appreciate the citizen reading it. He was concerned that this local match I talked about, um, in the led, in, in the memo section L one says, we'll pay prorata among all municipalities and counties based on population. My concern is that the CRTBO could eventually incur additional taxes against the town, and I caution the council against seating it, so I, I think the citizen's concerned about just ever increasing cost. I would just assure you that the matching funds that I described before are our dues, and it's based on population, so our cost would go up in ten years. The next time a census is taken and our population has changed. Our population goes up relative to the region, our cost would go up from seven thousand to something different. If our population goes down relative to other municipalities and towns, it could go down. So it's not a tax, that's the first thing I'd say, and I think, uh, it is a confusing read, but we're talking about the dues based on population, not taxing authority that would ever have CARPO. As the citizen said, ceding our sovereignty over to the CARPO, so, questions?
When the population goes up, do we get more, a better percentage of votes?
Yeah, at twenty thousand, so we get one vote now for our population of sixteen thousand or so. At twenty thousand, we'd get two, Waxall tripped that lever in the last decade, but they were the only one, and then again, at fifty thousand, you'd get three. But not many, but, um, that's how it works. Charlotte has a population that represents fifty-six percent of the region, and they have a weighted vote of only forty-six, so that, that was a big part of the debate, is that how much should Charlotte, uh, uh, have in a vote? When they represent more than half of the population residents have, uh, ratcheted back their request, well, we've moved them back a little bit lower than they were. That help? Other questions? Okay, I'll make this motion since I.
Well, sorry, I'm sorry, uh. Just to clarify, to be one hundred percent clear, so if our population goes up, our costs go up, but that's funds that, not from our pocket, it's federal funds that we've, we already received.
Now, let me clarify again, so, yeah, so, so we think of them as annual membership dues, annual membership dues from our budget to participate in a regional, uh, conversation about federal dollars. Dues that everybody pays add up and equate to the federal match required for their federal dollars. So we take the match required every year from federal dollars. Becomes the basis for which it's divided among all of the entities, that becomes their dues. Makes sense? So we'll test our population again in ten years, and that might change the percentage of the annual federal match our dues equate to. We're one point one percent of the population of the, of this area now.
So if, if I'm understanding it, it, we're still, um. This is money we would have to pay anyways to get that federal match, right? So it's not that you're getting, you're paying in and you're getting, you're, or you're paying your dues and you're getting nothing back? Is that accurate way of saying it?
Yeah, I, I think so, so, so assume we said, no, we don't want to participate in the regional, roads will still be built around us to serve us, as part of the regional transportation plan. We lose a seat at the table, and then we also lose the chance to participate in the discretionary grant program, which happens every fall. I would argue that's just as important, because that's where we've seen, I think, like I said, three hundred dollars, uh, that, that we've been able to get for our town, for a relatively small membership fee, think of it that way. But these are tax dollars, not, uh, other dollars.
Right.
It's confusing, I'll be glad to.
Sorry, the, um, seven thousand that we pay and then get matched, so there's fourteen thousand.
No, th, th, don't think of it that way, so, so the region acts as a body, everybody works together to provide the match for the federal dollars. Planning dot, not federal dollars, just leave it at that. So we pay our fee to participate in the regional transportation conversation and meetings and all the benefits. But there's, there's not a seven thousand match, that we see seven thousand come back, the region is trying, as, as in Ms. Donnelly's grant, we're trying to come up with, with the match for the federal dollars. Doing it through, um, levying membership fees, if you think of it that way, through membership based on population, so it's fair.
That we're one percent. Does that mean there's a hundred times seven thousand?
Right, roughly, we're one point one, so six thousand something thousand dollars, Charlotte pays fifty-six percent of that, we pay one point one.
That doesn't sound like a whole lot of money.
Seven thousand dollars.
I mean, the, the overall hundred percent doesn't, doesn't feel like a lot of money.
Yep, th, those are federal matches for federal planning dollars, planning, and then there's this whole other world of construction and grant dollars that come in.
Ah, okay, okay.
Sorry, I didn't explain that well.
No, no, that's, that's good.
Okay. Happy to take them, it's confusing, but, uh. Okay?
I think we've, we've gotten.
All right, will you make a motion then, Steve? Yeah, we're gonna, it's item seven A now, we moved it from a consent item C, so the motion be approve the CRTPO board memorandum of understanding update.
All right, so I make a motion for the council to approve the CRTPO board memorandum of update.
You have a second?
Under, sorry, memorandum of understanding update, sorry.
Get a second.
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we also added item seven B to the agenda tonight, it's called vendor attendance policy at Stallings Fest, I'll turn it over to the manager.
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Richardson, and I'd, uh, invite Ms. Nichols and Ms. Donnelly to kind of help me with this one, but first I want to bring your attention to this document, it's in front of you. It, it's got several things in it, but the heading is June tenth, twenty twenty-four, does everybody have a copy of this? Yes, sir. So, uh, previously, in June tenth, uh, the mayor had asked to add an agenda item, and, uh, long story short, after just some discussion, uh, council directed staff to create a policy for government agency booths at events. And to bring it back, uh, to council for consideration, there was a number of First Amendment, general fairness, operational practical at issues that come with it. And, uh, as, as part of that, one of the things that kind of came up that we talked about, and I, I perceived has got a consensus on, is that until we drafted this policy. Uh, our approach would stay the same, in that we didn't make exceptions, it was effectively just for sponsors to come in and have a spot where they could set up a, a booth that would be reserved for them. So, uh, but one of the things that's come up since then, in fact, today, uh, was a resident, uh, had reached out and expressed desire to have a, uh, voter registration drive. And have the town, uh, kind of set up a booth, set up tables and chairs, do things that we normally don't do for folks. And I believe, uh, the resident already contacted, uh, the mayor, for example, and there seemed to be some confusion, so, uh, we wanted to come before the board and just get clarification. As, as Ms. Nichols and Ms. Donnelly and I talked earlier this morning in my office, I think Ms. Donnelly put it perfectly, we just want to do the right thing here. So, uh, to kind of bring you up to speed, and as a refresher for the board, Aaron, do you mind going over the second page, uh, that has the kind of timeline of events? And then beyond that, the rest of the packet is communications we've had with the resident, we just wanted to kind of share, uh, that resident's verbiage, we didn't want anything to be get lost in translation, uh, and just be completely transparent. So, uh, Aaron, do you mind, uh, reviewing that, please?
Sure, um, so like, uh, Sam Andrew said, so on the second page there, it depends whether it's June second, it's just a bullet list of the timeline of the things that have happened thus far concerning this request. It first started on June the second, when the citizen requested a booth for voter registration on behalf of the Board of Elections at Stallings Fest. on behalf of the Board of Elections at Stallings Fest, and the citizen wanted the town to provide the table and the tent. On the 5th, Ms. Donnelly's department responded and asked for a contact from the Union County Board of Elections to coordinate with, so that we could further investigate this request. The citizen did reply and copied a Board of Elections representative and offered offering that this woman would would assist with the volunteers and provide some more contact with the Board of Elections. So the Parks and Rec staff then emailed that Board of Elections contact person and explained that currently the town doesn't allow these types of booths, but they were welcome to walk around Stallings Fest with flyers, you know, your presence is always welcome, you just would not get a booth. That email did not receive a reply from the Board of Elections.
And what day was that?
That was on June the 5th, it's the second mail that you have there. That, the citizen who initially made the request then forwarded the email to the mayor, and I believe that was the evening or soon, the mayor brought it up at a council meeting. And initially, the mayor thought, because it just said BOE, initially, the mayor thought it was the Board of Education, not the Board of Elections. So then on June the 6th, town manager then clarified with the Parks and Rec director and the town attorney that a policy needed to be created that discussed governmental entities at our events, because that was not yet spelled out. So on June the 10th, that item was brought to you guys. It was actually added to the agenda, and you discussed it, and you held consensus that the Parks and Rec Department would create a policy about government entities having a booth space at park events such as Stallings Fest. It also was in that meeting that it was confirmed that the current way of doing things with booths would stay as is until this policy was created. Okay? So during the month of July and August, Ms. Donnelly and Ms. Cox have been working on a policy that would allow for government entities at events, and that information is actually going to be brought to you at the September 2030. So that brings us to today, when the citizen called Parks and Rec Department asking for an update and requesting a table and a booth at Stallings Fest on behalf of the Department of Elections for voting registration. So that's where we are today, that's kind of the whole history of the situation. Just a few notes that we also thought were important information to have. One was, the Parks and Rec Department has received similar requests to this, one just last week from the Department of Health Services. And as we normally do, the Parks Department declined letting them have a booth. However, again, they were told, however, you're welcome to come and walk around and hand out whatever information you have. And this particular topic was the Medicaid expansion. Okay? It is also important to note that there are requirements from the Parks and Rec Department for any vendors or sponsors that do have booths at events. Those requirements are listed there for you as the very last bullets, it's a certificate of insurance, it's a signed vendor contract, which basically says things like, if if you do something that we don't allow, you're escorted off the property, those sort of things. The vendor or sponsor does have to provide their own setup and breakdown. They also have to provide their own table, their own tent, their own chairs, and all of their necessary materials. In other words, the Parks and Rec Department has limited supplies, they have limited tables, they have limited tents, and those things are used for the actual town efforts of these of these events. So we don't rent additional things for other entities. And then in the case of sponsors, there is also a fee required for them to have a booth space. So it's just important to note that when you get a booth space, it is literally just a piece of earth, a 10 by 10 piece of earth, no equipment, they have to bring their own. So those are just the facts, and those are the timelines.
So what did, what was going, what's going on in other towns? Are they allowing, they're not allowing?
So that's what July and August was, was asking local municipalities what their policies on this. A lot of them had to have some. However, it seems the other towns are doing, is they, governmental agencies can and cannot come to. For example, Waxall, I think they only allow, say, a vendor of this sort to come to Autumn Treasures, which is like a vendor market, and they made rules a little more specific for these, to ensure that the quality of the event is not. So, for example, you want to want to come to Stallings Fest and be hammered down gutter guards, these things that kind of tell you something that don't really align with the town council's mission for the current event, and that is, as it stands today, family-friendly environment, all that are welcome, come out, play, enjoy, have a good time. So that's this policy that y'all will see on September 23rd, and it has these things that other municipalities do, to kind of fit with Stallings. So it's something that we've just had to put a little bit of time to make sure we're doing the right thing.
So as you can see, it's, one of the reasons we're coming to is time is of the essence with this request. There seems to be some confusion, and at the same time, there's some, if the board does want to create an exception, then there are some details that we need to work through. For example, do we have a certificate of insurance? A lot of different things that are things, so.
Did you ever hear back from the Board of Elections, or did they like send an application or anything?
I have not had any communications with the Board. Other than the email I did send to them, however, did not receive a reply, and that is in.
So you, hmm, policy that you're writing, it's going to, I mean, I'm sure it's very hard to write something that says you can come, you can't, and how are we, how are you distinguishing?
I I can clear that up a little bit. So we're using the definition of governmental agencies as defined in 143-31810B, and that's a public body, any elected or appointed authority, board, commission, committee, council, or other body of the state of North Carolina or the county of Union.
Okay, so is the DHS one of those that would qualify? Okay.
These are exceptions under the First Amendment.
Madam Attorney, can you set a limit to the number of government agencies that could attend any one festival, so you don't get overrun with?
Yes, and that's one thing we talked about, is, you know, what that number is. You know, I suggested three, I just threw that out, but I don't know with the board.
What I like about what.
See appropriate.
What I like about what Ms. Donnelly said about the town of Waxall is they they allow a carve out for public service government agencies, as you've said, we could do. Board of Elections in this case comes near the election season of the year, but that's the only time they allow them to come, probably the only time they'd want to come. So it feels like I haven't seen, we haven't seen our policy yet, but are you saying that we could make an exception this time to allow the Board of Elections to come, have a space, they provide all the materials, a certificate of insurance? Because we're a month or two from an election, and then we could visit the policy in the coming weeks and nail down some of these things? Is that an option we have tonight?
That's an option. I I guess the question would be, do, what, how do we go about that? There's all these unanswered questions we don't have now about, do we still require them to have a certificate of insurance? Do we require them to submit something in writing to us, right? We have a, something from a resident, right, saying that they're doing this, but we don't have anything in writing from the Board of Elections, so.
It feels like it should be an application, an application is whatever you'd require in our policy. You've written the policy, I assume, so whatever a vendor would be required to provide is what I would think we would provide. Citizens, I think I'm basing a little bit on this, I know the mayor's not here, but I see earlier in this packet that the mayor was leaning toward feeling that the Board of Elections obviously should have a spot to come to the the festival. I'm not speaking for the mayor, but but I'm just reading his words here, it feels like it's something he was in favor of, such as should allow the Union County to have a booth at some of our events, so. I'm not really big on making exceptions, at the same time, if we're gonna have a policy review in two weeks, both Stallings Fest is this weekend, and we've got a Board of Elections that wants to do something, I would say if the Board of Elections can, I would personally think if the Board of Elections could make application to us, post haste, provide a certificate of insurance to cover the town's liability if anything were to happen in their space, I would be fine to do it, but we would nail that down. About when and what types of events, I would think.
And we also would require them to provide their own tents, tables, materials, setup and cleanup.
Kind of in the same boat, is that, my concern here is that this doesn't, doesn't, I haven't read through everything, but my my biggest concern here is that it doesn't feel official to some extent. And so it, since it's dealing with signing people up for voting, it it feels important for me for there to be some type of official wrapper around it, that's.
Unpartisan is what you're saying.
Well.
That's also in the policy, is that governmental agencies are to be nonpolitical in nature and will participate to provide information only to citizens.
Yeah.
It's been forever right since I registered to vote at at age 18, but when you do so, right, do you have to mark Republican or Democrat, I assume?
You don't have to.
Or, yeah, or independent.
Yeah, my my biggest thing here is that this doesn't feel like it's an official request, and so I'm okay, I'm kind of okay if it goes the way that Brad kind of laid it out. I'm sort of not okay with it. Citizen-led event, I I feel like there needs to be some type of official tie back to that government agency.
That's right, the application, the certificate of insurance and all this stuff typically comes with an organization, not a citizen, but yeah.
Can we, I mean, I mean, I'll I'll be the one to address the elephant in the room. You know, we've we've said the citizen, we know the citizen, and, I mean, somebody that's a pillar in the community is, I mean, I know that we don't have anything official in our in our statutes about, you know, benefits after leaving office or anything like that there, but is there any implied benefits for or anything like that there that I wouldn't be aware of?
Questions?
Not really a question, just, I I'm, I think I'm concerned, there's our with granting an exception. My concern is that if we grant it for this, and it came in after the DHS request, that we're being very selective in the requests that we're granting, so if we grant this, I would, my opinion or my thought is that we, whatever we grant, we do the same for DHS. I think they have to have an equal chance as well to, you know, follow the process to get a booth.
Just a point.
Oh, it's not? Recently?
I would say that is the most recent.
Most, so there have been other governmental organizations?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's that's my concern, right, is that we, and to Mr. Ayers' point is that, that this this rubs me wrong in that we've shot everyone else down. You're now you're now telling me it's not just DHS, that we've shot multiple parties down, and now we're saying to grant this. And don't get me wrong, I think getting people out to vote is made is tremendous, and yes, this is probably the most time pressing thing. DHS could come out next year.
And we have informed everyone that is calling, if they're ready for now, flyers, they can be an advocate at the event, it's not, however, you are just not allowed a 10 by 10 booth. So do you want to make that clear? That has always been an option. As far as I've been here, provided a 10 by 10 booth, that's kind of what you guys are all talking through tonight.
Well, just to, some of these, I mean, like, the DHS, they're they're not signing people up, they're just giving out information or answering questions or whatnot, right? They're not doing a, what I consider to be a.
A booth activity?
A a very, I mean, that's where, to some degree, there's a little bit of a, you know, I mean, they're requesting a booth to do something that I consider to be a very definitive requirement on how to do that process that that the state has put together.
But you don't think they're going to sign up people? Hey, you qualify for this.
See, that's what I don't know. I mean, I I wouldn't think that you would be able to sign up in the middle of a affair, but, uh, I don't know.
Just keep in mind, one of the struggles we had from this at the get-go is, right, we can't discriminate based on the speech, based on content.
Right.
So it makes me uncomfortable to have a conversation, we're going to allow this person because their content is different than what this person is doing. That's, we got to stay away from that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, puts us in a weird, I know we're all elected officials up here, but it puts the town in a weird spot. I mean, on one hand, I feel like, okay, you're you're helping people with, you know, facilitate civic duty and things of that nature, and then on the other hand, it's, you know, that is a formal process, and that, does that put us on the hook for, you know, any potential issues that may occur from that formal process not working appropriately at Stallings Fest? I don't know, I don't know.
Mentioned a 10 by 10 booth, Ms. Donnelly is applicant, there's not an applicant, I should say. Are there other options?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So you mentioned a 10 by 10 booth space, allotting that for them, then providing their own tent. Are there other options where, beyond walking around, what if they were to come, if the BOE came through handing out literature, stopped, set up a chair, a table somewhere in the park, would that be a violation of the rules? They've set up a space, probably? Feels like it, yeah.
Yes, I would say if they set up like a true table, where you kind of have this formal.
Right, so we wouldn't encourage that, they would need to come through, because there'd be no insurance and no nothing like that. Okay. What do y'all think? We spent a lot of time on this one.
My opinion is to just keep what we're doing, you know, known to everybody, and then we can look at the new policy, and that, you know, next year it'll be maybe different.
Okay, you might want to make a motion on that.
That's my motion.
Mr. Minister, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna second it, because. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna second it, because the way I feel about it is that, um...
Say for, go ahead.
Well, yeah, it just doesn't fit. I think there's more questions that I don't feel like we can answer between now and then.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
I support it, and I don't think we can be selective in the speech we're choosing.
All right, let's take a vote, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. So, we'll review the vendor policy in September 23rd with an eye toward this for the future. All right. Item number eight, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A subpart 3. Like to have a motion for that and to invite Kevin Parker, the town engineer, into the meeting. Can I have a motion?
I move that we move into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A 3, and we invite Mr. Parker and the town attorney.
A second?
And I.